It's got our comprehensive plan and has this really good reference I found on developing some comprehensive plans, but it's on seventy-two pages. And I can't read seventy-two pages.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter what meeting.
Yeah. There you go. Yeah. That's my. And I have one that's for the public.
I got it.
So, you know, if we have a conversation about this. I'm sorry. Online. Oh, am I online? Hi, everyone. We're getting going. Get with you. And yeah, this is. This is a really nice thing I found about developing some plans or comprehensive plans. All right. Three days. Let's see, did we know is John coming today or is he? We don't know. Okay. Jim sounded like he was not calling in. He is on vacation. So, in terms of, I don't think we have much that requires our quorum in terms of what we're doing today.
We have a quorum.
We actually do have a quorum. Yeah. All right. So we're just discussing the bylaws? Yeah, I think we'll do the bylaws. Yeah, thanks. Yeah. The section of the bylaws. Yeah. And we can see what else needs to be done to them and then we could vote on them on the next thing. Next round, go around. Let me go one. No taping. Bear with me if there's anybody online. I'll be here in a moment. Okay. I will bring it below the next time. Okay. Let me call this meeting to order on the Nankok Planning Commission. And let's take attendance. Commissioner Adler. Commissioner Holdren.
Yes.
Commissioner Labby. Commissioner McGowan. Commissioner Whitezow. Chairperson.
Here.
Okay. Am I on?
Oops, there we go. But I do think it could be a little here. We're gonna push it back a little bit. Okay. So we need to do an, we need to approve the meeting, the minutes of November fourth and February third. The meetings of November fourth needed a summer vision. And any comments or things that you want to change in the existing, in the February or November, the revised November minutes?
I pointed out to Debbie before the meeting, all the references to Jim McGowan in the February third minutes have the next to the last letter of his last name as an E when it is actually an A.
All right. That, that we could fix without requiring any. Just for future reference. Yep, you're right. So.
And thank you because it matters.
Yes, we will correct his, for, I don't think there's any online, but we have, we had a correction on James McGowan's spelling of his name and, and it will be in the minutes. It will be, the minutes will be corrected. I don't think that requires that we see them again. I think it's just a small change. But do we have any other comments on the minutes? All right, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
For both the November and the February meeting of the Town Planning Commission.
May I have a second?
Okay.
Can I suggest we amend that to include in the motion that we're making changes? Just.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment, so sure.
Sure.
That we're making small changes with spelling in the minutes, in the February third minutes. Okay, with that amendment, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay. All right. So the first order of business is discussion of the bylaws, our new bylaws. Cindy had some comments and changes on them. And of course, I had printed out the one before you did that and I was just being stingy, so. Do, would you like to discuss the changes that you thought needed to be made in the bylaws?
Sure. I'm happy to. And Matt also had some comments. Did you, I can't remember if you distributed those to everyone.
I sent it out earlier today.
Yeah, yeah. I moved the name to directly under Division Three Planning Commission. The name of this board shall be the Town of Anancock Planning Commission. And then the next section I left as it read. I didn't make any changes on that, I don't think. Where you see key responsibilities. I deleted all of that because it seems to me that that didn't belong in the bylaws. Each responsibility is quoting the code. And when you do that, anytime the code changes, you have to revise your bylaws. And that doesn't usually happen, so they're quickly out of date. So I would suggest that we just leave those responsibilities in the code. We've referenced them in the prior paragraph where most of them start.
I'd like to, my disagreement with you on that is mostly that, you know, referring to the code is a whole nother, is a whole nother set of documents. And having, now whether we want to create a, another quickie document that's easy to look at that lists our responsibilities, key responsibilities. But I think we might want to think about leaving them in, particularly because there's been some discussions about what the planning commission's responsibilities actually are. And one individual said that we were responsible only for zoning. And so it might be worthwhile, although it's not a bylaw per se, it, it is a position description, right? Essentially a position description. So I don't know where you want to necessarily put them, but I, in our case, in the bylaws I just did for the foundation, we did a sort of a simplified version of the position description for the board members in the bylaws. We actually doubled them up, doubled it up. So we had a separate position description that was more detailed, but then we had a one that was in the bylaws just because it became quick reference and it also made it serious. I mean, it's, this is what you're supposed to be doing, right? It's part of the bylaws. So, anyway, that, that would just be my comment on it. What do you think, Paul?
Can I just add one thing? In reading this magazine this evening, there's been a change in this legislative session that would say that we now have to consider auxiliary domestic units in the comprehensive plan. Not that we have to allow them, but we have to consider them. So that list is already out of date. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Well, but it doesn't, it doesn't list unit by unit by unit. It just says housing, zoning, rezoning. It doesn't list them. I mean, we're supposedly supposed to consider manufacturing housing under the code, right? And that isn't necessarily in this, as long as we say that we're discussing housing.
I was gonna ask that, is this a compromise that we, we do what Cindy suggested and remove it from the main flow of the document and make it an appendix to the document with the, the statement as of February two thousand and twenty-five, the key responsibilities are.
Okay.
And that way, that also hinges it in time for us so that in some other time.
Cynical enough to believe it will never be updated?
Well, I understand that, and that's why I'm saying it's an appendix, right?
Well, we're on it, girl, aren't we?
You reference code in the main.
Yeah.
That's not what I'm raising my. What I was gonna suggest was, since the authoritative copy of this is likely to be online, make that reference to the code section a hyperlink that says, "For what's current, go there."
Part of the issue is that all of these suggestions don't have a code section cited. So that's got, that would have to be researched. We'd have to find the right section. And, and it skips there.
Okay.
Sorry. If only it were that easy.
Yeah, but it's a good thought. It's a good thought. I, I like the idea of making, of leaving them in in some form and if, putting them in an appendix that's dated, then, you know, because on top of that, these should have a, a statement at the bottom that says, yeah, it says adopted this date and then attested. So they're dated already, right? They are dated. And I just think it's worthwhile, especially since, like I said, I've, I also have had a discussion with, there's a lot of confusion about what we're supposed to be, what we actually do. So I want to make it easy to get it at that. So what do you think about the idea of putting it in the append, and making it an appendix? Jeff, what do you think?
Well, I, I agree with Cindy. I mean, I think, you know, the bylaws to me should probably be as generic as possible. And there is, there is text in here already that kind of says what we do from a high level perspective. I guess I don't, what exactly would you, you know, have in this appendix in terms of position description, as you're saying, or responsibilities?
This key responsibilities section right here.
Like at the original.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the key responsibilities section.
I was just thinking of it as a quick, easy reference.
Right.
Yeah.
That's all I was thinking of it as.
And I think it's worthwhile having it somewhere where it's easy to grab because, like I said, I've been with, and I know you've had that conversation and I've had conversations where there seems to be a considerable amount of confusion that dates from the previous planning commission, which was pretty quiet, so. So what do you think? Can you live with it as an appendix?
I can, as long as you can find a code section for all those responsibilities. I don't want something in there that says, that doesn't have a citation. To me, that's useless. And just speculation if you can't find it in the code.
Go with it. That seems reasonable.
Okay, well, let's see if we can find code sections for these. How would you like to look those up? Suggested it, girl.
No, I cited it as a flaw.
Oh, you cited it as a flaw.
We can all be charged with looking.
Okay, well, let's see if we can find it. All right, so we'll see. So, moving along here, what other changes, what other comments or changes did you have? So we'll work on that problem.
Okay, and I, I told you I changed, moved the name up to the first.
Yeah.
Under membership, if you recall, last time, I suggested five to seven instead of a specific number because historically we've had trouble finding people to serve. So that was my suggestion. And then Matt made, in the original, it says the remaining six, year and after referred to as commissioners, shall be qualified voters of Anancock. At least half of the members shall be real property owners. And Matt and I kind of had an exchange over that. He crossed through the six number, which is correct, of course. And I had commented, do we want all to be real property owners? Matt suggested that renters should be able to serve as long as they meet the residency requirement. My feeling on that is that we want people that are committed to the town. Not to, you know, say anything bad about renters, but are they really going to be long-term residents?
Yeah, you've got, you've got long-term residents in town who are renters. They're there. And further, if you want to try to attract a younger, any potentially younger ones, it's entirely possible. I'm thinking of somebody right now, he's a renter. And I don't think we want to shut off a big, a, a pretty substantial chunk of the town, potentially chunk of the town.
How many renters are long-term versus short-term?
Well, that I can't answer, you know.
You apparently know some long-term ones.
Yeah.
I don't know any long-term ones. I mean, what I do want to see is continual churning of the group. Because it, as you all know, it takes a while to learn what we're doing. And so you want people that will be on, hopefully for a four-year term.
Well, I also think if we're coming up with, you know, workforce housing down the road, you're gonna have long-term renters. And you've got some long-term renters on Johnson Street. You've got at least one on King Street. You've got, oh God, now I can see her and I can't remember her name. There are some on Carr Street, and it's not a majority of people. But I don't think that we should shut off anybody who has a commitment to the town, who's, who's a renter because they can't afford to buy, right? Because right now, you know, it's increasingly difficult for young people in particular to buy.
How many rentals are there in town? Do we even know?
No, we don't.
Totally lack any data to base this on.
We don't have many short-term rentals. I mean, it's one of the things that. Right.
For anybody, anyone that rents longer than thirty days is considered a long-term renter. The apartments at the corner of.
Right.
I've got a compromise. How about if we strike that entire sentence and leave it as qualified voters? That includes renters.
Yeah, because you do have people, I mean, you know, you have people in, I, I can think of some people at the apartments on College who are long-term renters who you might want to have on this group.
Why do you want to remove, "Half the members shall be real property owners"? Isn't that what you just said?
Yeah.
I'm just asking what your reasoning is for that.
I don't know. I don't have any. Okay, take it back.
You just went from, you just went from, "I don't want to have any renters," to you could have the whole.
Theoretically. I didn't think of that.
Were we having a day here? Is this?
I don't have a problem with it, with the, at least half the members have property owners.
Right.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
And plus, on top of that, I mean, the town council, you know, is ultimately going to approve these. And if they see a big red flag, they're gonna catch it, right? Yeah. So, and you're gonna be there voting, so.
Okay, in the next paragraph, it says, it's talking about the terms. And it was two seats for one year, two seats for two years, yada, yada. To me, we should end these appointments right now, and I don't know how to express this real well. But right now, we should have staggered terms. And then after that, it should be four-year terms for each chair, is what I meant to say.
Yeah. I absolutely agree. Yeah, I, I guess I don't understand this wording. Because if this is, so this is saying from this point forward?
The way I reworded it, are you looking at mine or?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't word it very well, and I, I don't know how to say, because we have a collapsed planning commission, we're starting over kind of thing.
Right, and I understand what you're saying.
Well, uh, I think you need to explain why this is happening now. I mean, it's sort of like, why would you, you know? And on top of that, I thought we'd settled that the last time anyways, because everybody agreed that probably somebody was gonna die before they finished their term.
Well, I guess the other question too is, the town council appointed all of these members.
Right.
And for what term was that? Technically, it was for the remaining term of, for the member that they've replaced. Okay.
But we haven't been assigned a member. Yeah, there was no designation.
Suggested with designating seat first of all, so that we can identify the terms of, you know, seat A is one year now and then four years thereafter. And then we have four-year staggered terms. So you would go through the six and decide who's gonna have one, who's gonna have two, who's gonna have three. And then it'll stagger after that.
Well, so this is an unusual situation. Couldn't we handle that in the minutes instead of the bylaws?
You know, even our bylaws as a town talk, and they were written back in the nineteenth century. Talk about the turn, the, the number of seats and the number of seats and the terms for each seat. And it's very similar to this. It doesn't, I mean, I think you're right. I think you could easily do that in the minutes rather than having it in the bylaws. But then we have to figure out what the term for each person is. Is everybody four years right now? So that's, that was, I know it was your question and mine as well.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you have a couple of choices. You can either assign us to a previous member and their, and their number of years, right? I mean, I was appointed to a vacancy, so, you know, I theoretically was appointed for a four-year term. Now, you know, if you want to get people matched up with someone, then you could, you know, shorten their terms. I don't know. Okay, two seats for one year each, two seats for two years each, two seats for three years each.
And I had added, after these terms, the next members shall serve for four years with alternating expiration dates of their terms.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't have any problem with doing that in the language, but the issue is, how do you, is, you've got to sort us out now, right? We have to get sorted and get assigned to, assigned to a person, right?
I thought we had volunteers last time. We didn't?
No? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, Mr. Bagwell sitting on that mission for twenty-four years or something.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's no limit on terms, but.
People to our town attorney about this, he had suggested that we start fresh with naming seats so that we don't have, as he said, you know, twenty years, you can't have anybody sitting on it, you know, committee for that long. And this, so, but we don't talk about term limits in here.
No, we don't. And we may want to, you know, I mean, it takes enough to, it's, I'm learning, it's taking, gonna take enough to figure out how to do this that we might want to keep people for a second term, but we may want to rotate them out after two terms. Does that sound reasonable if, once you've done two terms, that you would be rotated out?
Except for the council, of course. My term is two years because that's how long I have left.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It does. All right, well, in that case, I, we'll have to, you know, assign people to the two seats for one year each, two seats for two years each, and two seats for three years each. So we're gonna have to, and we're short one person anyways, so, right? We don't have seven yet. Oh, wait a minute. Yes, we do. So it's a question of, can you go back and let us know who, whose terms were? Oh, we don't even know that, okay. Yeah, we need one more person. We want one more person. I'm working on it.
Hope we got our bylaws five to seven.
Yeah. Yeah, but it would be good to have one more person.
I just think we should, you know, talking about it in the bylaws doesn't make sense to me unless it's the first bylaws you ever do.
That's true. I mean, that's, that's the truth. We removed them from the foundation bylaws because it had, it reflected the Articles of Incorporation, which had had to set that up for the first go-round, right? So, yeah, well.
Yeah, I would remove that whole sentence about the two seats, two seats, two seats. And then you say four years with alternating expiration dates. What do you mean by that?
Just that the appointments are staggered. Now, in our instance, that would mean some people would serve one year, some people would serve two years in their current term. And if they were reappointed, it would be a four-year term.
So you're saying every year someone's term expires? I'm just trying to understand what you mean by alternating expiration date, every year. Every year, two people with their four-year term would be up.
If you have six.
Correct. Okay. Yeah.
Depending on the number you have.
Right.
Well, you know, I don't know, maybe we can just, if we get full attendance next month, maybe we can just, people can agree who's, who's leaving early and who's, who's gonna be around.
I'm sure there's a long line at the door for replacement, so.
The expiration of their current term.
Of their current term, yeah.
I probably wouldn't add something in here to, to limit terms at this point. I would probably see, let's see how things go over.
Yeah, I agree.
Years and then you can.
I agree.
End the bylaws at that point, but.
That's.
You want to back yourself into a corner with not having anyone that can serve on the.
Right.
That's also, you're right, but that's also something that town council can decide too. So we don't have to have it in the bylaws, right? Because we really, we're appointed by town council.
Yeah.
So, you know, we can kick the can into their area of responsibility if we want and just let it go.
Okay, so now I'm confused. Yeah, yeah, it's a town council matter. We could leave it there for now. All right, so do you just want to say that they serve four-year terms and that the terms are staggered? Okay, and then what we can do is solve informally the staggering of the terms at our next meeting when everybody's here. Let's, let's do it that way. I think that makes, let's not write it into a, yeah, let's not write it into the, into the bylaws.
The next question was under three dash two five three, election of officers, number two. Vacancies in office shall be filled immediately by regular election procedure. And I kind of had a question because I didn't know what the regular election procedure was. So Matt added that we should add, following Robert's Rules of Order, in process with a motion and proper second with a quorum of support, naming the officer.
That's fine.
Sounds fine to me.
That's fine.
Okay, and now under three dash two fifty-four, meetings, number three. I suggested that in the second sentence, in writing, the town manager shall notify all members and the general public. The general public was an addition at least five days before special meeting. Then number four, remote participation. I read the code section on that, and it wasn't quite as specific as this had read to me. The minute should record the reason for a member's absence and general location. It didn't, the code didn't say you had to give your specific location from which the member participated. The remote participant must be heard by all persons at the primary meeting location. The ability to attend meetings remotely is available equally to all members of commission. And then I struck, and the mayor.
Yeah.
Seems not an attendee. A member's remote attendance may be disapproved by a vote of the members attending the meeting and the physical location. If the remote attendance violates this policy in any material way, disapproval must be noted in the meeting minutes. Any, an individual may participate electronically, no more than, the, the code section says, I can't remember if it's two or three, but at any rate, a number or twenty-five percent. They're accommodating the fact that not every planning commission meets every month. So, since we do, twenty-five percent seems reasonable to me, so I put two or twenty-five percent of the normally scheduled meetings per year. So, since we do, 25% seems reasonable to me, so I put two or 25% of the normally scheduled meetings per year. I struck the next sentence, body must maintain physical quorum for the meeting. It doesn't make sense to me that you have to have a physical quorum in a remote meeting. Why doesn't their vote count?
This was all done during COVID. What they were saying was that you had to have four of you here, two of you attend remotely, and have all voting rights, but all six of you could not attend remotely. That was the intent of that.
And that's, that's pretty standard. That's pretty standard. I mean, you want to maintain a quorum in person, I think. Okay.
Is that required in the code?
I don't know that there is a requirement anymore. All of these are going to pass through our attorney before council gets them, so as far as code references, the lawyer can do that.
Okay, thanks. Good.
And I did change the code reference because the one that was in there was wrong.
Just a question to everybody, is it says an individual may participate electronically in no more than two or 25%. So, just for clarity, do we want to say no more than two meetings or 25% of the normal meeting? So it wouldn't be two or 25. It would be two meetings or 25%.
You want to add the word meetings?
Yep, it would just be adding, but that's a question, not a statement.
25% is three meetings.
But, but what I mean is, just for clarity.
Yeah, yeah. Where's our English major?
Over there.
I guess I would pick one or the other. I don't know, we need two or 25%. Just pick two or 20, or 25% and just make it one of the, one of the other.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Couple of observations. One, you often hit, like Labor Day, there's not a meeting September. Sometimes the Fourth of July throws it off, sometimes New Year's throws it off. So 12 is not always the total number. The other thing, while I have the floor as a math major who knows how to pre-brie, is that in the middle of that paragraph, the apostrophe in members needs to come the heck out. May be disapproved by a vote of the members.
Absence? No.
The members attending. There's no, it's not the mem, it's not the possessive members, it's the people.
Mm-hmm. Which sentence?
A member's remote attendance may be disapproved by a vote of the members attending that member, that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Does that change your mind if there are fewer than 12 meetings?
I, I, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter either way. I just was trying to simplify it.
Well, if we, you know, especially as things heat up with the comprehensive plan and everything, if we hit Monday and it's Labor Day, we may want to have a meeting the next week. We may want to continue to meet because I would expect we're going to be, I mean, you know, that we may, since it's the first Monday, we may want to go ahead and, are we allowed to, you know, if it falls? If, if our meeting falls on a first Monday that's a holiday, do we have the option of scheduling one for the next week?
You do, and town council just voted for the calendar year meeting schedule. So if you did decide, if there were a holiday on a Monday and you did decide to reschedule that, all I have to do is plug those shit as a, as a special meeting.
Okay.
And that takes care of it.
And we may have other special meetings too.
Yeah, possible. Let's, let's make it that if, if there's a holiday on the first Monday, that we will schedule our meeting for the following Monday. Right? Does that sound?
You'll vote on that next year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And now your meeting schedule is set for the year, so you can see one that's.
Then we'll make it a special meeting. All right.
Normally scheduled means the ones that we've scheduled now. That's, that would be the total at this point, though we wouldn't account for special meetings that get scheduled.
Okay, so should we say, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with striking two. Should we say 25% of scheduled meetings, which would include any extra or special?
Yeah. How do you feel about that?
I would leave the normally scheduled because one of my concerns is if we do have to schedule special meetings, that may, people's calendars may not be able to accommodate that in person. And making sure we can take care of business means that we may have to have some people remote.
One thing that was pointed out to me is there's no requirement to actually attend. This is just the requirement for remote attendance.
Right.
So if you couldn't attend the meeting period and had already used your remotes, you just wouldn't attend.
Yeah, I guess that's true. Oh, I mean, there is something up here that says, you know, three meetings.
Yeah.
You know, I guess the council can get where it was.
Yeah, it's in there, you're right.
Town council may replace a member who has missed three meetings within 12 months.
Ever happened? Unlikely.
Right.
Did we land on anything? Did we land on 25%?
I think, I guess the question is, is it on the normally scheduled or the scheduled?
We should probably do it as normally scheduled. And the reason is, is that we don't know until after the fact how many 25% are represented. If we're including a special meeting. You know, you miss, you wouldn't know until the end of the year. Or 25%.
That's true.
It's already scheduled, kind of puts a line on it.
Okay, next.
And then what happened with the, the body must maintain a physical form for the meeting? So this is crossed out here, so we are, are we leaving that or removing that?
I think Casey was saying we should keep it, right?
I think we should keep it, but, I mean, I suppose if we, you know, have another, another version of COVID or, you know, emerges or something.
What, what's the concern here?
Look at tonight. If one of you had to be remote, you wouldn't have a quorum.
Yeah, that's right.
Saying is, is, what, what's the concern of having someone remote being able to vote and having it count?
Well, it has to, it should count.
I know that's happened with the town council.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, when this, when a state of emergency gets published, that's when this would trigger.
Yeah.
Need to have a quorum in person. And when there's a state of emergency, you don't need to have that quorum in person, and each person attending can vote and have their vote counted. But in, in a normal meeting, in a normal time, the question would be, or that would the remote attendee be allowed to vote and count? And I believe that it should.
Yeah, it does, and it does on here.
But the vote would only count if there was already a physical quorum?
Correct. You couldn't have the meeting if you don't have a physical quorum present.
Yeah.
That's what that would.
Well, to me, that, why have an elect, a remote participation policy then? I mean,
Well.
If it doesn't give you more leeway in how you can conduct business.
Right.
Well, if we're, if people participating remotely can vote, then they probably ought to be counted towards the quorum unless there's a state, in state code, it says that they, that we must have a physical quorum. And we don't know what the state law is on that. Yeah, I, you know.
I didn't notice. Do you want to leave it in or, or put a question when we send it to the attorney?
Yeah, let's, let's send it to the attorney and see what they say. I mean, we, in the foundation, we count, we count remote members as part of a quorum. But we have to because we have some members who are so old that they can't always, they can't always drive if it's raining or whatever.
Okay. And my final change was at the top of the next page, I changed the four to, no, that wasn't my final change. Changed the four to a five. And section three dash two, 56, in hearings, I just like, on number two, instead of besides, I like in addition to better, so I changed it. But that's purely, purely a preference.
If it makes you happy, I'm happy. I'm happy.
It's more.
So, okay, that's fine. I'm fine. That's fine by me. Okay. So at this point, so what we've agreed on is that, let me reiterate that, so some of these changes now have to go to the town attorney to make sure that they're, we're within the law. But we've agreed that what we're going to do is sort out the, the staggered terms in our next meeting. And we don't have to put that in the bylaws, okay? Is everybody fine with that? So we'll sort that out. White soul, I know you're going to be shooting for one. No, no, you don't. Okay.
We can pick straws.
We can pick straws. I think that's a good way to do it. At this point, we're at public comment. I think it's better off to get the, let's get the input on this.
I'm guessing that qualified voters of Onamco is a convention, is a term that she's, from that, by convention? I wasn't sure quite what that meant.
Well, it, it's, where's the town in which you're registered to vote? So when you go to, when you go to a poll election and you have to get your, they give you the ballot for that nomination.
So does it mean that they have to be registered voters or just that they have to be eligible?
I think that's a better choice of words.
So eligible to vote in Onamco.
Aren't eligible to vote and registered the same?
No.
No, what's the difference?
If you're not registered.
You might still be eligible to vote.
The right bounds and have the right age and the right felony absence status, but not have signed up.
Yeah, yeah, so it's eligible to register to vote.
Yeah.
Would be, I think what you're trying to say.
Don't we want registered?
No, there are people who, yeah, there's a lot of people who don't vote. I know, it's, makes me sad, but I, you know.
Assume they were registered but just didn't vote. No.
No, they're not registering.
Wow.
With the motor voter law, you have to be more proactive to refrain from being registered to vote than you used to.
True.
In, now it's opt out.
Mm-hmm.
But.
And plus, you can register day of now, so, you know, there's a lot of that, so it's something you don't know, so.
Other question that I had was on the special meetings, two pages later, of whether the five days before a special meeting is proper as far as public notice and FOIA.
Public notice is actually three days.
Okay.
So that's the law. This is stretching that a little bit more.
Okay, so this, the, I guess I'm thinking about hearings that have to be advertised ahead. Meetings are different.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Have you guys been able to make hide or hair of it's over there, Matt and Debbie?
Give you a fresh version.
Yeah.
Draft, breathe.
Yeah. And can you talk to the attorney between now and then? Okay, excellent, then we'll, it'd be really nice to get this done next time. It would make me happy, everybody happy. All right.
Put it in the attorney's hands.
Okay.
That they, I promise you, they're going to make changes. Once they make those.
Yep.
And next time, you know, consider voting the bylaws.
Yep, let's see if we can get this done. So, okay, so are, we are through that business? Are we now through that business? Okay, very good. So let's talk about the Virginia Freedom of Information Act training. First, before we get into that, I wanted to say, I put this together, these resources together for you guys because, I don't know about you, but I can't read anything of a super length online, and I hate it when I can't make notes on it. So what I've done for you guys, and one of the things I did, I don't think I gave you this, Matt, but I will. I found a, access to public meetings under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And while this is not a substitute for training, it's a handy dandy little document that presents in, it says what's a meeting, what's not a meeting, what the requirements are in terms of communication and stuff like that. And it was produced by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act Advisory Council, Freedom of Information Advisory Council. So that, while that doesn't substitute, it gives us something that we can look at and draw on, okay? Yeah, and it includes things like how to make, how to make a motion for a closed meetings and stuff like that. So it's a nice, it was a, it's a, a nice resource, and I thought it'd be helpful if everybody had it. And I'll make sure you have a copy.
Could I interject? Matt, have you had ordered the VML publication for them?
Okay, great.
Okay.
Whenever you.
More in-depth than that.
Yeah, yeah, this is a good starter. So we've got to talk about the training. I was, I had a, had signed up for online training and then was unable to do it because of a conflict at the library, another meeting at the library. So I don't know how you guys want to proceed this, whether you still want to pursue it individually, whether you want to, you know, take your medicine and do it all at once together. How long, do you know that web, how long is that webinar? Oh, God.
Well, Paul and I are actually already trained in certain.
You're already trained, so really, yeah. So it's just you and me and, and John and Jim. Okay, all right. Well, can we say that, can we promise that we will do the online training between now and the next meeting? Can you bring yourself to, yeah?
It's just an online?
It's an online webinar. Okay, so we will, everybody will be done with this, we hope, by the, and I will send an email to, to John and Jim. The training.
It's another training opportunity. I sent that out.
Yeah. Actually, it already happened, I think. Eastville already happened. And I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't do that because I had a board meeting.
But the other question I have is, the, I signed up for the webinar, which from what I could tell, is not a self-paced, it's, it's you sign up for a time slot on a particular day.
Mm-hmm.
And the one that's remaining is, that I was able to see, is at two o'clock on Thursday, the 13th.
Okay, well, that's my one vacation this year, so I won't be at that, but I'll, I'll, I'll find, they must be offering, continuing to offer it, so.
Eighteenth.
Oh, it's the 18th of this month? Okay.
According to Matt, what you sent on February 13th, we should be receiving an invitation, but I have not yet.
I haven't seen it either.
Who sent it out? How did you know about the Eastville one?
Somebody emailed me.
Michelle Gowdy is doing, coming.
So should we? So should we receive an invitation? Can you get us, can someone get us invitations to attend that? Oh, okay, okay. Where is it? At the courthouse? Know that, all right. Know that. All right. Yeah, all right.
I would suggest you go to the live training so you have a chance to ask questions. It's much helpful.
Yeah.
I'll have to do it online on my hometown that week.
So March 18th is what, a Tuesday? Yeah.
And does, does planning commission have to be FOIA training too?
They do.
Let's get FOIA done and then we'll get the.
Is it all together?
She'll roll them together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do they have to have certificates like we do?
Well, I think that they'll, they'll issue them.
Yeah.
We can put it in a file.
Okay. Well, all right. Well, I will, I will hire myself down to Eastville for that. So. Okay. Okay, so we'll see if we can get it. I'll send it out and see if we can get it done, get everybody done by the next meeting. Okay. Okay, so are we set with that? Everybody good on that? All right. So comprehensive plan. We've got, what was that? I caught you. We caught you.
No, it's my alarm system.
Oh, there you go. Probably, probably my brother's cat, Ed. So. Okay, so let's go, going to, before we start this, let me also get you to, back to this notebook that I created. And it includes a copy of the Onanco Comprehensive Plan. But then it also includes this thing, which I found, which is incredibly useful. And this is produced by the Virginia Chapter of the American Planning Association. And it's a review of the tools and expectations, both the legislation and to look for localities that are developing comprehensive plans. And one of the things that's interesting is that it sorts out very clearly. It talks about a process that we could follow very, pretty clearly. It also talked, although we'd have to fill it in, but, and it also talks very clearly about what's required and what you may want to add. Right? So. It's got a really nice, it's, I thought it's, it's really useful and I've been learning a lot. I've been sort of winning. I did a quick read on it and now I'm doing a close read and taking notes. So I've got that in there for the, all of us.
The only qualm is that it's dated 2021. So there are probably things that we will have to consider that aren't in here, right?
Well, I think that there may be small things, but the general discussion of process and what's required and what is nice to have in there. Okay, is, I think those things are still amenable. There may be small changes and we can look to see if they're there by looking at the law on comprehensive planning. My sense is there's probably, if there's a change, it's probably on something like the issue of manufactured housing and rentals and stuff like that. So.
Are you going to the VCU?
Well, that was the other thing I wanted to talk about. I tried to register and it had already filled. And so I put myself, I wrote to them and asked if there was a waiting list, a waitlist. So I said, okay, I'll have to do the next one. The next one is in person, Cindy. It required, they only do the virtual one, one time a year. I can do the in-person one. I will, I will do it. It means a little more money. And it runs, it's in July and September. But they only offer it virtually once a year and it filled up. And I thought I'd move, after I got your permission, I thought I moved fairly fast, but I didn't move fast enough. And they said that they had, quote, extraordinary demand. So. Yeah, there's a lot of places struggling with development issues, I think. And so there's a lot of demand. So any rate, so it's in person. The next one's in person. So I am planning, I'm hoping to hear back from them about whether there's a waitlist, but in the meantime, I will go ahead and, I'll go ahead and register. And then I'll see who, if I can mooch off somebody for accommodations, so we can at least reduce that. There must be somebody I can mooch off of, so.
No, because that's in the next fiscal year, town council's budget is going to include planning commission travel.
Okay, okay. So can I go ahead and register, do you think? Okay, go ahead and register. All right. Okay. Yeah, that'll come out of this year and then the travel would come on the next one. All right, that's good. So I will go ahead and register for the live one. Yeah, they only do it once a year as virtual. And it sounds like they could do it more often. So. So what I wanted to suggest was that, you know, as I look through this other document, one of the things that struck me was that their, their planning process that they discuss in this, in this document is collecting and developing information, development of objectives, formulation of goals and objectives, consideration of alternative courses of action, and then adoption of plan and adoption of measures. So it measures to implement the plan, which, and that's moving into town council, although I think it would be okay for us to suggest steps and, but they have to, would have to approve them. So, so to begin this process, before we start developing and collecting information, I think we need to understand the current plan. Right? The plan that is, exists. And so what I'm wondering is if we should have a, a reading assignment for the next meeting, which is going through the current comprehensive plan. Okay? And I, my sense is that I think, given there's a lot of sensitivities and a lot of issues coming up. And I think that this is a moment where even if it makes us a teeny bit late getting it done, I would say that public input's going to be important on this. And it may take a little time to organize that. And we'll have to think about how we want to organize that. So what I'd like to do is suggest and that we assign ourselves to get to be really familiar with the comprehensive plan. And then if you can spend some time on at least the first part of this document, like the first 15 pages or so, let's see if we can start to outline some kind of process. And it could be that we want to divvy up expertise and take responsibility for, you know, sort of overseeing individual sections of it. I, I think it would be really great if we could have a town, a planning commissioner come on who is particularly interested in water, for example. That's a hot button issue. And if we can get somebody who is, who really wants to develop some expertise on this and talk about some, some of those issues in a sensible way, then that would be, that would be a good thing, for example. So I don't know. What do, what do you think? Because we've got to figure out how to begin. At this point, I'm trying to figure out a way to begin.
I think review of the current plan is certainly the best place to begin.
All right.
And as we do that, I assume that we would start thinking about what our strengths and abilities would be.
Yes.
Which sections might be, we could be primary and what sections we can be secondary. I don't think, I think.
I agree.
Both primary and secondary folks.
I think that sounds good. And what I would also suggest then is if you can go through that first part of this plan, the first part of the, of this document from the Planning Association and look at, it talks about elective elements as well as required elements. And so you might want to look at elective elements and see if there's things on there that we might want to include that don't necessarily show up in the required elements. As I was reading through this, Matt, the one part that was driving me crazy and I couldn't really understand was the requirements for interaction with VDOT.
VDOT has rules that we have to follow.
Right. Right. But can you, well, I, we'll work on that, but there, they seem to make a big deal out of it. It was probably, they're mostly thinking about larger communities. But there was a lot on the requirements for transportation, planning for transportation. Right? Right, right. Okay. So, all right, so that's the assignment for the next time. Is that okay? And we'll, we'll run the next meeting. It'll be a seminar. It's essentially a seminar and we'll, we'll go through this and try to figure out, you know, try to figure out how to divide up responsibility. And then that will help us figure out how we want to collect data and, and begin the process of public outreach. Does, so does that sound acceptable? Is everybody good with that? Okay. Okay, so. The other thing in this that I'll just mention now, although it, it's nothing that you need to call on immediately, is that after those things, I put in a small thing from our code of ordinances and, and all it is, is definitions of what an apartment is, what all these definitions are. Because I thought we needed it. Okay, so that we all, when we're talking about what an apartment house or, it even includes automobile graveyard as one of the. Didn't it blow your mind? It's in there, Sarah. So that is Article One in general, okay, from our zoning code. And all it is, is it gives us, you know, what's a bed and breakfast, what's a, you know. Yeah, so any rate, I put that in there for, for you all. And I thought we might make use of it. Okay. All right, well, that's. All right, so there we are on that. So that'll be the number one, that'll be our main biz, our business, really, for the next, the next meeting. And now I've lost my agenda. I buried it here. Here it is. Okay. Okay, public comment. If anything you want to add on that? Public, Joan Q. Public out there? Okay, okay. All right, any comments from you guys about this process? All right. I think, I think we could have a good, we'll have a good conversation. Now, the next thing is discussion of planned unit developments. And the only reason I wanted to raise this is because, well, there were two reasons. One is that it's a, it's a tactic that Xmore is, is considering. I also think that the planned unit development is a, here's the article on X from Xmore. Grand unit development. So they have actually developed an ordinance because they think it's going to make it easier. Do you want one of these? Yeah, they think it's going to make it easier for them to to deal with some of the developers who are trying to put, you know, trying to add a considerable amount of housing and other stuff to the town. So they've opted, they've opted it. And and in fact, what Chris Carbaugh proposed for out here by the road is actually a, a planned unit development, isn't it?
Other county's own them.
Yeah, I don't know how they've zoned it, but in essence, it looks like one because it mixes multiple uses. Although none of them are recreational or nonprofit. I also have for you a Wikipedia article on planned unit developments that was actually pretty good. Let me give you one of these, Matt. And I think that we might, you know, that as we think about development in the comprehensive plan, this is an, an option. Do you want to see one of these, Sarah? You want this? There you go. And then also, Matt's include, done a little bit of research that he has shared with us. What? The main thing we, that attracts me to this idea of planned unit developments is that it allows us, it would allow us to get around, you know, when, when Jefferson and Johnson got developed, I was sort of disappointed by it because it's just this sort of march of lots, right? And, and you would, you would, it would be great if, if we thought about things that included the possibility of cul-de-sacs with green space. In some neighborhoods, we may want to permit professional offices, right? If we've got townhouses, you may also want to include professional offices. Or it may be that you just want to require green space and other recreational opportunities be built into, be built into the development, right? And and I think that it also, to tell you the truth, one of the things that I'm, that I've seen a lot up in Delaware is that this is an approach that's being used up there quite a bit. I've started to look into that. And one of the things that they discovered is that people really didn't want to do yard work anymore, right? They wanted to own their house and they wanted to have a small space where they could have a barbecue or something. But they really didn't care about having an acre of ground anymore. And what, but what they wanted, but they wanted to have access to it, have access to it. So they opted for, they've opted for approaches that use townhouses on cul-de-sacs with green space and other amenities. For example, some of these planned unit developments include things like pickleball courts or other, other recreational opportunities. Sometimes if they're large enough, they include pools and all kinds of things. And I don't think of us as being large enough for that. But on the other hand, it may be that we could think about something that's a little more creative when development is proposed. So I only raised this, it's too early for us to think about it exact, at this point. But I thought it needed to sort of be dropped into the picture to think about some of this. As we think about if this person does a proposal for townhomes, do we want to set it up in a way that we can guarantee, you know, sidewalks, adequate parking and green space, for example? Including playground, playground space or something like that. So. So any rate, that's why I, I, I raised, I raised this at this point. Do anybody have any comments? It's not a piece of business that we have to do per se. It's again, it's more towards educating ourselves on, on development issues associated. For example, I see that Liberty and Hill Street stuff and I can't stand what's happening with those first little houses out there. You know, they're right on this main road. They're not set back at all. There's no, you know, you can see it's this sort of box development and on a fast road, right? And set up to the road. And then there's all this space behind it. And it'll just be a bunch of boxes on little roads if we don't figure out another way to, you know, well, first of all, if we don't annex some of this stuff. But if we don't figure out how to shape it so that it's more attractive as, as development, as a development. So. Any questions or comments on this? The big thing I found out is I was concerned that it meant required commercial space, but a planned unit development does not require commercial space. But it does mean that you have the flexibility for the shape of the relationship of the structures. And you also can require green space, recreational space. And given that recreational spaces actually, even though we're sitting in a rural area, is actually at a premium in town, we may want to try to figure out ways to build it in to the development process down the road. to build it in to the development process down the road. So. Any comments? Matt, any comments on this? Yeah, I mean, we're, it's, it's out there. But I just wanted to raise this as an issue since X-More is also thinking about this. So, any, any comments, Joan Q. Public?
Seems like a good thing to consider.
Yeah.
In the abstract, to have thoughts.
That's what I think is that.
Before something specific comes up.
Lands on us, I know. What I'm concerned about is that stuff can land on us before we've had time to think about any kind of good options. And I'm already seeing a little of it. And the question is, can we, you know, can we prepare? Can we prepare better for this? So, okay. So the other item I had on here was figuring out a process to share early information on proposed development or zoning requests. Because, Matt, when that, when you mentioned that the last time, it kind of caught us up, all of us up short, right? Where we're saying, oh, well, you know, okay, we believe in worker housing. But how can we, I, I don't know, how to, how to do this so that stuff?
Just wait until there's an application.
Okay.
That's the easiest way to do it. I don't want to spread rumors.
Right. Right. That's, yeah, that's the issue. But is there a way that we could suggest that? I guess an application does, does that mean that they've bought the land already? And they're?
Make the offer contingent on zoning.
Okay.
If they need a zone, it's a change.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'm concerned about what'll happen is it arrives and, and, and there, there we are and they're, they're hot to start building and we haven't had a chance to think about this at all.
They would use current code.
Yeah. Well, I think part of the, is the comprehensive plan something that can include potential revisions of the zoning code, of zoning?
You can make that as a measurable or a goal.
Okay.
Or force.
Okay. Do you see any, trying to maintain confidentiality and stuff? Do you see any reason why all of us, that we need to think about this faster than going through the comprehensive planning? That there's, that there's an issue coming up that we need to, we need to think about ahead of time?
You're, you're already sort of spot on by saying, let's, let's look at, you know, PUDs, for example.
Right.
And let's start the conversation because it's going to take, it takes, you know, six months or minimum to get the number of hearings that you need.
Yeah.
To code change. So if you're, if an application comes in between now and that time, they're going to use current code.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I ask a question? Does this zoning map show the boundaries of town? The reason I'm asking, I'm just wondering where the tracts of property are that are kind of undeveloped.
There's, there's not many.
There's, there's some mention of it in the existing comp plan of how many acres are undeveloped. And I can't remember what it was, but.
Yeah, it's not that much.
No, it isn't.
No, but if you, but you could do something high density. And if you're doing that, you want to make sure that, like I said, that it preserves green space and has some amenities attached to it. So, okay. Makes, this worries me a little bit. Okay. Let's see, there was. All right. Do we need a motion to the effect that we'll only entertain questions or consider it after an application? Do we need a motion for that?
Because the developer wanted to find out whether or not this was going to be a.
Yeah.
You know, an easier process or not.
Yep. Okay. Okay, well. All right, well, it means that we may want to consider recommending planned unit development or something like that as part of the, as an option in the comprehensive plan if we can identify spaces, space for it. And we may want to recommend, I mean, I don't think anything's happened with an effort to annex at all, has it? There's been any effort, or is anything going on with annexation?
Yes.
Thank you. You don't have to tell me anymore. Just make me happy, please, you know? So, yeah. Okay. Because it could be with annexation that we use the, we use a PUD, right? To make it a much more attractive. So, okay. Okay, that's good. So the, my other question is, one of the things I want to do this month is getting going on maps. And Matt, what, you know, do maps come through you? You said you had material, you have, you know, up-to-date GIS or something like that? Or should I go to the county?
Well, we've got the, if you go online, you could find our GIS.
Right.
Zoning map that's got boundaries.
Right.
And all of that in it. But that is not the official map for the town. That, that's still the one from 2007, I think. Yeah. And it, it hangs, you know, in the front lobby here. So what I was hoping was that we would go through the map that's online or, you know, I can make bigger copies of this.
Right.
And go through each parcel and just make sure that the map is exactly right. And then council can adopt it, a new zoning map, it all in one swing, rather than saying, oh, you know, this parcel should have been a park. Oh, this parcel should have been R1. This one should have been. So that's the way I was hoping for is that the commissioners would review the zoning map as a project.
Okay. So, do you want to make this, so if we spend next, let's spend next meeting getting ready for the comprehensive plan? And then let's spend the May meeting, let's see, let's go through the zoning. How about, does that sound?
Go through the map.
Go through the map.
Item by item.
Yeah. Yeah.
All I need to do is, because I'm the person that put these parcels together based on current mapping, you know, so you would be confirming what I've already done or correcting anything that I've missed. It works in your timeframe. In my world, this is already ready for review.
Okay.
Of the fact that.
Well, I mean, do you want to try to?
Have a question?
Yeah.
The key, for instance, where it says ag, I'm assuming our definitions will tell us exactly what that means?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, it will. Well, do you want to? I'm just trying to think how to, I mean, we could theoretically with the April meeting, we could do both things. Do you want to try to do both things? Or you want to try to? That's a huge thing.
Just the comp plan in one session is going to be.
Yeah. Yeah, if we're really, really serious about going through it and thinking about it. Okay. Is the zoning map issue crucial enough that we should flip it? Okay, all right. So this gives us an agenda, a rough agenda for April. We'll work on planning for the comprehensive plan. And then May will do, we will get the zoning map, work with Matt and get the zoning map cleaned up so it can become an official map, which we have to have for the comprehensive plan anyways. So, yeah. I'm wondering whether I should also get some maps from the county? Don't they have a?
Use the same source.
You're using the same source, okay. All right. Yeah, so let's see if we can get a couple of ni, get a really nice big one, too. Okay. Okay, all right. Well, that gives us a nice agenda for the next two months. It moves us along on, on all of this. Okay. All right. Any other, so let's, we've got public comment and commissioner comment. So Joan Q. Public, any other comments?
I've found some other questions beyond what Matt and I talked about on the map. I, rather than taking up time of everybody, I think, let me just give those to you.
And I'll get them incorporated before we print the map.
Okay, good. All right, that's great, thank you. And commissioner comments? No comment from Paul? No comments? No comments? All right. Well, I think we're actually getting off to a pretty good start. The other thing about this is that you're welcome to add material to this. If you find something that will help us with the comprehensive plan and stuff, you can send it to me and I'll print it. I have one of these printers that is double-sided, fast as lightning. It's only black and white, but I don't mind printing this stuff out. It'll take it away, take it off the hands of. And I also, so everybody's got a copy of this, but I also made a copy. Oh, I've actually got a whole thing. Do you want the whole thing, Matt? Well, it's the access to the public, it's the thing I gave you. I don't know that you need it. It's the comprehensive plan, the FOIA thing. Yeah, you may not need it. So, at any rate, I also made a copy. What I'd like to do is if we add more material to it, I've got a copy here that actually can circulate in the public meetings. And I'll hang on to that so that when, you know, if we get comments and people aren't happy, they're also not happy when they look things up on their phone. It makes them less happy even more. So let's, so I've got a public copy, is one of these is the public copy. They actually are all available and I can just send you the, why don't I just send you the PDFs of all this? Yeah. Okay, good.
A bunch of people.
Right.
That makes it just as.
Annoying. Yeah. Yeah, so what I will do is send you the, because I also had thought that there might be some people who actually, you know, prefer to read all this material online. Are you one of those?
Yes.
You do that? What are your eyeball, you must have the eyeballs of a Superman.
It's more convenience. So if I want to look it up somewhere.
Yeah.
Certainly have to have this.
Yeah, that's true.
Or go find this. So that's the convenient fact word search. Yeah.
If you know it's in.
True.
You don't know.
True. Well, what I will do is make sure everybody's got the PDFs too of all of this and I'll send you the PDFs. It's all PDFs and, and it'll allow people to decide, you know, they can look at it either way. When I'm studying something, I'm one of those people that I need a paper copy so I can scribble all over it and ask questions.
The real reason is my eyes are terrible, so I can zoom.
There we go, there we go. There we go. Mine are, mine are getting worse by the minute. Okay, any, any other comments? Anything that I should have done that we, that I missed? Did I get everything? I think we got everything? Okay, thank you.
Casey, you've done a huge amount of work. And I have to say, keeping up with you is going to be a challenge.
Well, I, I don't think that's the case. I just think that I thought we needed to, everybody had to have the same information. We can't start talking about this, doing this stuff. And thank you for going through the bylaws so closely. I, I'm very appreciative of that and the time spent on that. So, okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor? I, thank you very much for coming, everybody.